To the flag of the United States of America and to their public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Conley.
Yeah.
Trustee Malinsky.
Yeah.
Trustee Conner.
Here.
Trustee, trustee Herzog.
Here.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Here. I may have a motion to approve the minutes of the December twelfth meeting.
So.
And a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And a motion to approve the minutes of the December nineteenth meeting.
So.
And a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And a motion to approve the meeting of December twenty seventh.
So.
Okay.
Right, any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. So I welcome the members of the community.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, we've been working on the petition, but we thought of if you, if anybody would be willing to take a petition and help us get signatures from like people, like I don't cut in contact with many adults and I know Holly doesn't either. So if anybody would be willing to take one and try to help us out, trying to pass them out more now.
Sure, I could do that. Yeah, why don't you, why, yeah, why don't you?
We can just give you the clip on, there's ten copies here.
Oh, clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, of course.
Thank you.
That's great. How's, what's the response been?
It's been good, yeah. I haven't asked, I haven't seen a single person that I've asked, they know yet, so.
Oh, great. Um, I have not heard back from the man at the plant, Clinton County Planning, um, when I asked him about the, um, um, the question about the FEMA restrictions and, and the, and the material needed. But he did say, which I thought was encouraging, he did say that FEMA is looking on recreational activities that they may loosen some of their restrictions.
Nice.
Well.
Uh, so he was going to look into that and get more information, but I thought that was a good, that was a good sign.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there anything else you wanna bring up?
Okay, I think those.
Well, they missed the, uh, they were unable to assist with, um, with Nikki with the children's, um, Christmas program because they had a rightful national, um, that particular Saturday. But you mentioned the car.
Yeah, like, or any, if there's any other like events similar to that that's going on this month or anything coming up that we could help with?
Um, well, on this weekend, um, yeah, I was gonna do the food, talk about food drive first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, Friday through Monday is the National Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service. So we're doing a food drive, um, in the community and if you could spread the word, um, the food will be dropped off at the meeting house porch. And I'll take it inside and then maybe you could help, um, sort it. Or, um, but primarily right now, I think, get the word out so we get a lot of donations, that would be very helpful.
I think we, I think we did with the Boy Scouts at one point, we went to the meeting house and did something with the food.
No, that wasn't with Koanis, you know, helped load trucks.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, that's right, you did help, the, the food that was going, I think, to Kentucky that time, yes.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so similar to that.
Mm-hmm.
And that's this coming weekend and then Nikki, you could talk about the, I don't know if you need any help on that.
Yeah, I don't think I'll need help this weekend. We have a, um, a beekeeper coming, a retired beekeeper coming, talking about pollination and bees. Um, but she's already, she has hands-on items and such, so that's just a talk, conversation kind of thing. Um, but I do have a couple of events, don't have dates yet, that will be coming up that I could use an extra hand, so.
That's good.
So, so I should have that info for next month's meeting, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'll keep it guys posted on that.
I know with Harbor Mall UN and North Country Mall UN.
Feels like we're doing something there every weekend.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the true, it's, Peter's gonna test, seems like we're just running, 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 running.
Yeah, it's a busy time.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Did you have anything to add? Oh, so we'll see you next month, is that what?
See you next month.
All right.
Yeah, well, hopefully, maybe y'all see you this weekend if you wanna help with that food at all.
Wait.
Uh, do you know where the?
The, the food drive?
Yeah.
It'll be at the, at the meeting house is the drop-off.
Yeah, that's right, that's right down the street.
Oh, okay.
And then.
Right downtown, across from the playground.
Now, when would the sorting be because, um?
Probably Monday, which is a holiday.
Oh.
Yeah, so coming Monday is a holiday, isn't it?
Yeah.
So I, I'm not doing anything on that Monday.
I can also, um, check on Sunday, I can ask the Boy Scouts.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you'll be there anyway.
If they, they'd be willing to, we have, we're up to nine.
Oh, wonderful.
We have nine scouts, we have one lone, uh, young lady.
Great.
And our first young lady in Boy Scouts, uh, because she's gonna be part of the troop because you have to have five in a troop.
Mm-hmm.
So she's considered a lone scout and I'm her mentor, but we actually do.
That's wonderful.
Up to nine and that's like outstanding compared to the way it's been so dismal, we've been barely alive.
Yeah.
We thought they were gonna shut us down, so we have to have five, we were down to four for a while.
Yeah, I mean, there was only five when I joined, like, what, five years ago now?
Yeah. So.
Well, that's great, that numbers are interesting.
We have more hands.
Good. Yeah, so you will be there on Sunday anyway.
Where we, I don't.
Are you meeting tonight?
We are now, we're back at the Episcopal Church.
Oh, oh, okay.
I, I did.
No.
Rick, now that you know?
No, but that's all right.
Oh, well, I know, we're back in the, we, yeah, Patty let us go back to the Episcopal Church, uh, Reverend Patty, so.
Okay. Okay.
So with that, and because down in their basement, we're able to, we haven't been able to use our flags or anything because the ceilings are not high enough at the meeting house, so we haven't had our flags up this entire time.
Okay.
So the ceilings are higher and all, again, all of our equipments being stored in their basements.
Yeah. Okay, good, I love that worked out.
Yeah, we appreciate the fact that you allowed us to use that space.
Oh, of course, yeah, anytime you need it.
And coded it.
In the future too.
All right, we appreciate that.
Okay, great, all right, well, I'll be in touch about that food drive then.
Awesome.
Okay.
Excellent.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Yeah, that Episcopal church is where I am.
All right, we have a couple of hearings, um.
What's that for?
Seven.
Are they technically at seven?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we can do, you can go into the meeting.
All right, so we'll just continue with the meeting, just don't let me lose track of time here. A report from the code enforcement officer, you have his monthly report and he also gave an end of the year report. You see that it's often the same issues that are coming up, sometimes the same people, but he has been very busy and, and I applaud him for all his hard work. He really has stayed on top of, on top of things, I think. Does anyone have any questions?
So I see they started back again on that building downtown.
Yes, primarily due to that message about, um, that they were going to be cited for violation.
Right, so how are they going to close that building up? Is his plan to have the complete second story off that building before winter, uh, or before it really sets in?
Originally, I think he was, but he's not gonna be able to this point.
I don't, yeah, I think.
Winter's already come.
Yeah, I don't think he has time to remove the rest of the second floor, but I think that's his.
So. Or is he closing it up?
Um, tarping it maybe? I did notice they did put up plywood on all the doors and windows downstairs.
Right, but I think that's been up for a little while.
Yeah, um, well, the front door was open the other day, so you could kinda, you could completely see through it. I don't know, Kim, I don't know how they're gonna do that.
I think you had to clean it out in order to have an engineer come in.
Yeah.
Has the engineer been in yet or?
No.
They had to clean it.
Okay.
Is my, this was my understanding.
I don't know, I don't know how you, I don't know how you enclose the top when it's so jagged and I don't know how you do that.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know.
Tarp, tarp won't make it through the winter here.
I don't think so either, the wind would take them away. I guess we'll just have to wait and see.
Okay.
But Chris is, communicates with him frequently, so hopefully it'll work fine.
We also have one on Cedar Street that I think, I don't know the address, but it was a frequent flyer before.
Yeah.
Um, it's not on his report, but, um, it's a, um, absentee landowner.
Mm-hmm.
Second building in.
Yeah.
You know which one I mean.
I do.
Um, it's starting to look really bad, I'm by there twice a day and it's starting to, looks like part of the roof is starting to, in the front, start to cave.
Yeah. You're right.
I think that's the last item on there.
I do think it might be the last one, I don't, I don't know everyone's address, but I believe that it might be the last one.
Oh, there's a lot more wrong with it than that.
No, but he did send a letter, uh, I believe, because I remember him asking for that address.
Do we have an address?
We have a local address that responds to his mail, yes.
Okay.
More about the first house?
The first house.
First house, yeah. Well, are, how are you?
I'm coming off Church Street.
Yeah.
The, the, the old, the old Grange Hall?
Oh, no, the next one, is that the one we're talking about, the next one?
Yes, that's the one we're talking about, right.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it definitely needs some.
I thought you were saying you were talking about the next one, actually.
No.
It really needs some attention.
It, it does, it does, and I mean, I know there was some stuff done to it, but nowhere near enough.
So we'll see what the response is.
Right.
Okay, here's my report. Welcome to two thousand twenty-three in the Village of Champlain. Let's hope it brings us health and happiness. We're looking forward to several projects in the village this year. The new disinfection system at the wastewater plant is currently under construction and is expected to be completed in the spring. In addition, other important upgrades at that plant are also going to be made this year. The water line replacement project will begin sometime in the late spring. This includes replacing some sections on Main Street, Elm, and South. Uh, this project will reduce the number of breaks and repairs and boil water orders, really looking forward to that. Also, we will be creating two small parks with land that was donated to the village last year. Uh, one will be at the corner of Church and Cedar and the other is a very small space near Central Nutrition. Our goal is to provide space for people to sit and socialize in the various neighborhoods. Let me know if you'd like to volunteer with us to help these parks get established. A number of activities are also planned for two thousand twenty-three. We will be hosting Slow Art Day and Arbor Day in April. There will be concerts in the park throughout the summer and many opportunities for children to do gardening, crafts, and fitness events. The farmer's market will be open from mid-June until September and the village fest will take place in August. This year marks the one hundred and fiftieth birthday of the Village of Champlain. I'm looking for residents who would be interested in planning a celebration of this milestone. Please contact the village office if you would like to participate in organizing this event. Um, also, I'd like to mention that this weekend, we are participating in the National Day of Service by hosting a food drive. Um, any donations of canned or boxed goods would be welcome, they can be left on the porch of the Champlain Meeting House, which is downtown across from the playground. And in the words of the poet, Rainier Maria Rilke, "And now we will welcome the new year full of things that have never been." I wish you all a healthy and happy two thousand twenty-three. Thank you. Report from the trustees, Kim?
Uh, I really don't have a report, um, other than the water board was going to meet this week. Um, I have a conflict, so I need to reschedule, so, and it's just going to be going over, uh, the latest information that we have received.
Okay.
So just stay on top of it.
Great, okay.
Other than that, I'm a jolt.
All right, thanks, Nikki?
Same, not a lot. Um, this Sunday at one is our, um, pollination bee informed event at the meeting house, um, with a retired beekeeper and there are some goodies and we're also making something with wax.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I didn't post a picture of it, so I'm not gonna announce it, but, um, the kids will be able to make a craft and adults are welcome to come, um, using wax and. Oh, I'm looking for glass jars, um, we're gonna set up a date coming up for, um, the garden club to create, um, mini indoor terrariums, so any size glass jar. That way I don't have to go buy them.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Yeah, so any recycling.
Like spaghetti sauce jars, that type of jar or something?
Yeah, that or old vases.
A little bit fancier, a little.
Yeah, and I'll take anything that there.
Yeah, those, those kinda round vases that.
Fish bowls, yeah, anything you might have hanging around that could be used as one.
With the mission, have anything?
Yeah, I, I bet they would.
I would guess so, I'll take a look.
Um, I don't know if they're open this week, I know they were closed for two weeks, they were getting some upgrades in, in the mission center.
Nice.
Yeah, they're getting some new carpeting, they had painting done, um.
Great, nice, good, okay.
So I'm not sure if they're open now or not.
Okay.
Anything else? That is it for now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Joe?
Uh, well, just a reminder on, uh, end of January, it's the twenty-ninth, twenty.
Twenty eighth, twenty eighth or ninth?
Twenty eighth or the Saturday?
Twenty second.
It's twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth.
At one o'clock, there are gonna be our first, uh, game day for two thousand twenty-three and anyone's welcome. Uh, be a fun time, we're looking for good attendance. And the second thing is, uh, well, we'll, we'll discuss it more in the new business, but the, uh, the garden shed or down by the, where the kids have their planting area and everything. Uh, I did some research on a couple sheds and we'll be discussing that in new business. And just one other thing, I'm thinking about an event for during the summer.
Mm-hmm.
I wanna discuss it with you, I haven't, haven't really mentioned anything, but it's.
Okay.
Something I've been playing around in my mind and I'm not sure whether it's something that would be very receptive or not, but it's, should be something would be good for the community.
Great.
Okay, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Joel?
I don't have much, but I remember a couple of months ago, we were talking about the water, um, the water crew for the board and if you guys needed help or if you wanted anybody to attend or if you wanted any extra hands, feel free to.
Thank you very much, um, we are a set board, so we, we have three people from the village and two people from the town. So, um, right now, we're, we're good, but thank you. And we, right now, we don't meet a lot because there isn't a lot of information, we're just kinda getting going again into, um.
Crunch, crunch time in the fall.
Crunch time is in the fall, this is, this is an easier part right now, but thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, uh, report from the clerk treasurer.
Okay, we have water in Sewer Building. Water was fifty-five, seven thousand, four thirty-eight and eighty-five. And Sewer was sixty-three thousand, three seventy-eight, seventy-six. Um, before we do the warrant, we do have some transfers. Um, transfer to A fourteen twenty point one law, thousand dollars, from A seventy-one ten point four Parks, thousand dollars, to nineteen ten point four unallocated insurance, a thousand dollars, from Parks, A seventy-one ten point four, thousand dollars, to F nineteen ten point four unallocated insurance, three hundred and sixty-five dollars, from F ninety ten point eight retirement, three hundred and sixty-five dollars, to G fourteen twenty point one law, six hundred dollars, from G nine zero ten point eight retirement, six hundred dollars, and to G nineteen ten point four unallocated insurance, five hundred and forty-five dollars, from G ninety ten point eight retirement, five hundred and forty-five dollars.
Do we have a motion to approve these transfers?
So.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? No, no questions? Roll call.
Trustee Chomley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Conner.
Hi.
Trustee Herzog.
Hi.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Um, the warrant?
Yep.
Um, we have additional invoices of two thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents for a total warrant of seventy thousand six twenty-five twenty-eight.
And a motion to approve the warrant?
So.
Second? Discussion? Questions? Those insurance, those number insurance, numbers are, I mean, I know that's something, of course, we have to have.
I know. One month they had retirement, one month they had workers' comp.
Yeah.
This is a regular insurance.
That's how they numbered there.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if there are no questions, I'll have roll call.
Trustee Chomley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Conner.
Hi.
Trustee Herzog.
Hi.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Um, we'd also like to approve, um, wastewater treatment plant disinfectant improvement bills. We have, yeah, uh, Paris excavating, we have one bill for two eighty-seven, fifty-five, forty-eight, thirty-eight for November and then December of one eighty-eight, zero zero two sixty-two plus. Um, we have a bill for Barton and the Judas of eighty-two thousand three and four seventy-eight for a total of five hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five seventy-eight. So these bills will not be paid till we close, um, the funding, which is supposed to take place on the nineteenth.
So may I have a motion to approve the payment of these bills once we have the funding in our hands?
So.
In a second?
Second.
We have no choice.
No, I know that, but I don't want anyone to say we're trying to approve things before we have the money.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, and so hopefully it's, uh, happens on the nineteenth. Any questions?
When are these bills actually due?
Well, some of them are overdue.
Already due.
Overdue.
Yeah, well, yeah, they're all due already.
Right.
Well, that's what I meant.
They're all due, but, but one of them, the bottom one's been due for a long time.
And they understand that we're waiting on our funding?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. All right, roll call.
Trustee Chomley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog. Herzog?
Hi.
Trustee Conner.
Hi.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
I just threw a little curve in there.
It's all right, wanna see if people are on their toes. Okay, report from the superintendent, we have, um, Mike's, Mike's list. Um. They have been busy, so I thank all of them for their hard work.
I think on the, the bottom there, where he has it in red.
Yeah.
That's been an ongoing issue.
Yeah.
I think it's something needs to be addressed.
Yeah, it comes up every year and I'm, I'm going to read it right now, but, um, anyone else have any comments or questions about the, the top part? Of what they've been doing?
No.
All right, so to the public, I want you to all understand this and hear this. We are having issues with people parking on sidewalks and in roadways. Please do not block sidewalks or roadways or you will be cited and may be towed at owner's expense. Trash cans can be put out day of pickup, but after pickup, they must be removed from the edge of the roadway or from sidewalks. Do not leave them curbside, it is a violation and you may be cited. And I know we say this, I feel like we say this every month.
It's every, every.
Mm-hmm. E- e- every month throughout the winter, but I know I went for a walk today and there was a car basically parked on the sidewalk where my choice was to go into the stra- I basically had to go into the street to get around it with the dog.
Have, have these people, 'cause I know there's frequent flyers, have they been ticketed before?
We have done that before, yeah.
I think it's time to maybe do it again.
That's what I was saying, animals we need.
Yeah. And that's, yeah, yeah, and that's what, that's what Mike's saying.
I mean, they, our village crew can't do their job efficiently if, if.
If there's a car in the sidewalk, you can't plow it.
Yeah. Right.
So there's cars in the street during those hours, you can't, can't plow. So, fair warning.
Yeah, I think they do need to be cited.
Yeah. Um, correspondence? No, I guess, I, I guess I've shared that one, um, thing that we were, the town and the village were awarded the comp, the comp plan, but that couldn't be separate. Uh, new business, garden shed, wanna talk about that, Joe?
Okay, well, did a lot of looking around online and basically came up with two different possibilities that I think is something, and I, I could be wrong, this is something Nikki might wanna make a decision on, but the first one is a Suncast Tremont storage shed, it's eight by ten, which I think is a decent size. And I gave a list of places that you purchase it through and the, the price. And then the other one's a Lifetime Storage Shed, eight by ten, and the same thing. Now. I like, personally, looking at the shed and everything, I, I like the Suncast Tremont Storage Shed as compared to the Lifetime and online, I, I've seen some bad reviews because of the doors on that shed.
That's type of, I was just looking at it.
Yeah, um, whereas the Suncast Tremont has a, has a good good rating. And there was one price through this one company on the bottom of that.
Yeah.
It was for thirteen ninety-eight ninety-nine. And I think that's, 'cause it's on sale and it might be short-term. Otherwise, it'd be, I think the price would maybe be about thirty dollars higher if it was on sale. But I did find there is a coupon, ten percent off for that company. I don't know how long that's gonna last for and I'm not sure if that's something that can be used on the shed, but it's, it's a possibility, so. So that would even lower a lot more. And with these, these sheds, like shelves and stuff don't come with them, but there are optional accessories you can purchase to figure out which, you know, what you wanna do and you gotta do some really digging to find some of this stuff because it's not right there. But, uh.
Does this include shipping?
Shipping is free on this, on this one, on that one company until sometime real soon. Most of them have free shipping, but that's something we have to look into a little bit more.
Okay. Are those doors lockable?
Yes.
It looks like.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure.
Because they show padlocks you can purchase and stuff.
Yeah, even, even the, the Lifetime one would have a, and a spot.
Yeah, they all have a type of lock or, or padlocks you can put on them.
And does it come as one unit or does it have to be?
Oh, it has to be assembled, they all have to be assembled. And another thing you'd have to do, you'd actually physically have to have a, a base built. I mean, it has its own base, but then that, you have to sit down on top of a structure that you build so you can move it.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, something like that, yeah.
But, yeah.
Right.
I like that.
Yeah, I, I like it too, I, I looked at, uh.
I do too.
A lot of them and that's, that's the one that kind of stood out.
Well, do we wanna, do we want to have a motion to purchase the Suncast Tremont one?
And didn't, can we have a grant?
Yeah, we have, we have the grant money for it, yeah.
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 I'll make a motion that we purchase the Suncast Tremont Storage Shed, it's an eight by ten shed. And I have the number, but I don't have it, uh, here. I think it's B S H eight one hundred, I believe the number.
Okay.
Um, from Omni.
From Omni, Old River, yes.
So now normally we put up, yeah, so are you going to say up to like fourteen hundred, is that? Or if it's not in stock, you, you might wanna have it.
Yeah, I'd say.
A little higher just in case.
I'd say fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
And we're tax exempt, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the second one was fifteen twelve.
Yeah, fifteen twelve.
So maybe you should go just up to a, a little bit higher just in case. So, maybe you should go just up to a, a little bit higher, just in case they're not available.
Fifteen twenty-five or?
Yeah, fifteen twenty-five or sixteen hundred. We have, we do have the money.
Okay, so, uh, make a motion that we purchase Suncast Tremont Storage Shed not to exceed sixteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
Second.
All right, uh, further discussion?
Uh, so, I have a concern.
Mm-hmm.
Seeing as the way things have been going in the villages lately, do we have cameras down there?
Um, no.
No, I'm, I'm.
No, I know.
I'm. No, yeah, no, I think that's a valid, I think that's a valid question, I think that's a valid concern. Um, we have not had problems over there, but that's not to say we wouldn't.
We also don't have a structure over there.
Yeah, so, um.
We had those wooden garden things over there last year, and.
Yeah, and the planters are there.
Yeah, but, but, we do need to upgrade cameras and probably add cameras, so.
The water decks there.
And the village garden.
Because, because of the damage that's been done to the gazebo, it's like, oh, something new and bright and shiny.
Mm-hmm.
Let's go destroy it.
Mm-hmm, hang out in it.
That's my, yeah.
Or just walks in there, those things all over.
That's, that's my concern.
Would you feel okay if we had a camera over there then?
I would feel.
I would, yes.
I, I just feel that we keep, we keep repairing. Our cameras don't seem to be good enough to actually like get facial to really know who's doing it. So, in my mind, I just like, okay, we're gonna spend sixteen hundred dollars, and how long is it gonna be before it's trashed? If we don't have cameras down there? That's my concern. Just because I've been, we watched the video of those kids kicking the railings out at the gazebo, right in the middle of the village.
Yeah.
That's just my concern, was spending that money and then watching it get trashed.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I'm not gonna say of all the things I can think of happening to it, 'cause I don't wanna give any of that ideas, but yeah, I can just see a bunch of problems.
But yes, I would, I would feel much better if we had a camera down there. Just because.
Oh, I agree, I agree, it's always my concern about everything.
I know, and it's unfortunate.
Because it's very few people, it's very few.
And I think, I think the, the, the most important problem is that it's
I know.
it's not enforceable, 'cause we, like you said, we don't have a, we can't actually tell who it is, so there's no teeth behind when we say, hey, stop kicking these things out, and it's just nobody gets.
Yeah, sometimes we can, I mean, we were able to catch one. We have to stop right now, and I, and they'll come back to it. So, um, I need a motion to go out of regular session. In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, that motion carries, and a motion to go into the public hearing.
Smoke.
In a second for someone, so.
Sure.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Um, can we do both public hearings in the same time? All right. So, public hearing for local law number one is the twenty-two, twenty-three code enforcement. Um, that is the, uh, the New York State Uniform Fire Protection Building Code, which we approved, but we do have a small change that we had to make, and that was to repeal the local law three dash two thousand seven. Um, and that repeal is written into this amended local law. So, that is why we are having the public hearing for that. And as we have no one from the public here tonight to weigh in on it, um, we have fulfilled our public hearing requirement. Can I go right into the second public hearing?
Thanks.
Okay, I didn't know if I had to do them separately. All right, so our second public hearing is for the, uh, local law number two, and that's the reordering of chapter sixty. Um, by adding that local law for the uniform code, we, um, would have had a duplication in section numbers. So, we have to renumber section sixty dash eighteen and section sixty dash thirty to avoid this duplication, and that is why we are holding the public hearing for that. Again, as no one from the public is here, we have met that requirement, and we're all set. So, I will ask for, um, someone to motion to close the public hearing. In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, that motion carries, and now a motion to go back into the regular session.
Smoke.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, and that motion carries. Back to our discussion on the shed, so we have a motion on the floor right now to purchase this for uh, up to sixteen hundred dollars, and we have some very valid concerns, I think, from everybody about whether or not this, uh, might get damaged. Um, what do you think, board? Do we go forward with it, or do we wait until we have the cameras, or?
Well, we're not gonna put it up right now anyway, so.
No, we're not.
It's just a matter of, I think we, we, because of the being on sale and the shipping on that one particular place, and I think I saw the thirteenth, which is only
Yeah, today's the night.
four days away.
Yeah, okay.
So, I think if we're gonna go with it, I think we should order ASAP. Yes, I think we should go forward with it.
What do the rest of you feel?
I agree.
When will we, we be updating the cameras?
Well, I mean, my plan was to try to find, to put into the new budget, once we start working on the new budget, to replace some of the cameras that we have with current ones that have better, whatever you call it. I don't know, just so you can see things more clearly. Um, I mean, there are other cameras we could put down there temporarily, there are trail cameras, there are other cameras. It's a small space, so.
Oh, yeah, that, that, that's a great idea.
You know, maybe we could, and those aren't nearly as expensive as what we invest in as a municipality. Um, I would think those, one of those or two of those could be set up very quickly.
That's just my concern.
I completely agree with you.
I, I'm tired of spending taxpayers' dollars just to see it get trashed.
Yeah, and I'm just really discouraged about the behavior of very few people.
The sad part is, is, is is you listen to people say, oh, the downtown this and the downtown that, and, and I don't know that people understand how hard we try to make the downtown look nice.
Mm-hmm.
But it's an uphill battle with these few young people that just think it's a great thing to destroy.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's just, it's so discouraging, and I know, Gina, I've said it to you before, it makes me really not want to do anything.
I know.
Because every time you do, something happens.
I know, I, I, I understand that, I understand that, I fight that battle myself. To invest money and make things nice, and then just have the, the damage done over and over and over. Which is a topic on our agenda.
I, I happened to notice that as I was going down the list.
Yeah, yeah, so we can talk more about that then. Okay, so for this motion, um, we need a roll call.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McThatchridge.
Aye. Chuck, thank you for the research on that.
Could I ask one more question? Do we have a place to store this until spring?
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll find, we'll find it.
Okay. I just, like, that's not gonna come in a little box.
We'll find a place.
'Cause it's not, not, no, it's not gonna be a little box.
Right, so I just. I think we had talked about that.
It'll probably be delivered, like, with a truck or trailer or something like that, it's like four hundred and seventy pounds.
Yeah, well, I'll talk to Mike about it.
We wanna be sure we have a place to store it. Maybe like the water plant or something.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Someplace long.
Yeah, but there's a lot of room up there.
There, yeah. Okay. All right, let's see here, what am I gonna do with my agenda? Add when I start moving papers? Yep, there it is. All right, so, um, happy birthday Village of Champlain, I think technically it's in September. Uh, our one hundred and fiftieth birthday. We do need to do something fun, exciting, and have a good time to celebrate this. Um, I'm just throwing it out there now, because I think it's going to take some planning. Um, I'd really like the community to get together on some committees, uh, and work with different board members. We don't have to all be on the committee, but it will always be discussed at our monthly meetings. So, anyone have any ideas of?
Would it be a good time to incorporate it with our, in August, when we have our other, that going on?
You know, we could, the only thing I say about that is that's also the garage sales.
Yeah.
And it's the, the big hurrah for the phone company.
Right, yeah.
Which I really appreciate both of those.
Yeah.
But I kinda want this to be like
Separate.
this is the Village of Champlain.
So, village can, the community can.
Should we, should we have, you know, when we have this, like, something like a concert association with that?
Yeah, music, yeah, music might be great.
Yeah, I think that would be a issue, yeah.
Um, yeah, people have asked for like a block party.
Yeah. Party contest, chili cookoff.
Yeah, yeah, we could have, yeah, we could have, yeah, food, some kind of food contest, um. I, I don't know, I just like to make it really big and a lot of fun for everyone. I guess maybe what we could do is, this is only January, maybe next month, just brainstorm your ideas and bring them in, and we'll create a big list, and maybe people watching this tonight will contact us and say, I wanna join in on the planning.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll, uh, we'll try to work out a few more details in February and March. Does that sound all right?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. Good. Okay, so vandalism of parks. Yeah, the, the, the major problem has been, um, I guess what most people would call minor vandalism, but it's just very, very discouraging. The, um, spindles in that beautiful gazebo are kicked out repeatedly. We've had some graffiti on the bridge and on the pavement. Um, we've had some tables carved. Um, there's just been little things continuously. Um, I have spoken to the Sheriff's Department, and they are going to increase their patrol, but it's a matter of like being there at the right time. Um, and I think we have to upgrade the cameras, particularly the ones at the boat launch and in Pocahontas Park. And other than that, I mean.
They're too grainy.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
Um, maybe we need to look at another company.
We could. Although, we've had those quite a while now.
Yeah.
So, they're probably almost outdated in terms of their, um, uh, pixels, or I, I don't know if I have the right terminology, but.
Yeah, but, I mean, it could be a ton of different things. It could be the camera, how, the quality of the camera, and then the internet, like what's connecting all of them to whatever we're looking at them on.
And I don't, I don't know that our service with that company was all that great.
I, I think with Janice's trail camera, I think that would be a pretty good idea, because they're motion sensors, so it's like it'll catch something when someone goes by it. They're pretty clear, they're pretty cheap. All you have to do is either, I mean, some of them, you can have the wireless where you have it set to a computer, or you can just take out the, the card, put the card in the computer, and then you just see the pictures, and you just go through all the pictures, delete the ones that you don't need, and then and, and, and with that, you can put them anywhere, so, you know, if they're playing a game with a, oh, we know the camera's here, you know, we can just move it to another corner, or another bush, or another something like that, and then it's just, you know, and then when you can actually enforce it, then I think it'll be a completely different.
Well, I, I think maybe the trail cameras are good for, for some, some spots, but not for every spot.
Right, I agree.
Um, but I'm not, I haven't been, I haven't been thrilled with the company that we used. We've had trouble with those cameras right from the get-go.
Yeah.
Um, I just.
They're just not clear enough to identify people.
No. No, and, and I think they've upgraded a couple of them already.
Yes.
Over the years, and, um, I just, I haven't, it's like, it's like they sold us the system and then went, okay. See you later.
So, you know, we'll start looking at some other companies.
Yeah, I just, I don't think that they did well by us.
But I definitely think we have to put it in the budget, I mean, these things are expensive, but several of them need to be replaced. In those, in those high-traffic, high, those high vandalism areas.
Mm-hmm.
Any other suggestions? All right, um, election polling place and time, so we have a resolution here, I'll read it, and then I'll take a motion to approve it. This is the resolution, polling place and time, twenty-twenty-three elections, Village of Champlain. Whereas the next village elections for offices of the Village of Champlain, New York, will be held on March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And whereas the Board of Trustees of said village must designate by resolution the polling place and hours which the polls shall be open per section fifteen dash one oh four dash three B of the State of New York election law. Then, be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined the polling place shall be at the Village of Champlain office, one on one zero four Route nine, Champlain, New York, with the polls being open from twelfth noon to nine P M. And be it further resolved that as required by section fifteen dash one zero four dash three B of the state election law, notice of said village polling place and time, the polls will be open, uh, let's see, polls will be open, be given at least sixty days prior to said election date. This resolution shall take effect immediately, I have a resol- I have a motion to accept the resolution.
Smoke.
In a second.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McThatchridge.
We need to change that on, on the bottom there. That's all right, we'll get that done, okay. All right, and then a public hearing for the tax cap override. Um, moving into the budget, uh, discussion. And one of the things that we need to do, um, early on is, we need to, where is that? We need to pass a local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established by the general municipal law. Um, this is just to give us the option to override the tax cap if we have to. Of course, we don't want to do that, but given, um, different factors, we may have to do that. So, um, we need to, um, set a public hearing to override that tax cap, and that would be at our next meeting, correct, Mary?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, our next meeting is on February thirteenth. We have a motion to set a public hearing.
Smoke.
In a second.
Sure.
Any discussion or questions about this process? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That'll be at seven.
Yep, yeah, that would be at seven. Okay. Um, the only other thing I wanted to say is that, um, we, uh, the, the town and the village were awarded the grant for the comprehensive plan, which is exciting.
Yeah.
Um, that is, uh, an award of forty-six thousand eighty dollars. Um, really important to, uh, to get that comprehensive plan updated. I didn't run off enough copies, but I think I gave you, in between each of you, the, um, this is the short form of the agreement between the engineering firm and the town of Champlain, who's the lead agency in this process. It's, uh, the supervisor told me that he sent it to their lawyer first, so he hasn't heard back from the lawyer. But I do, I just want to point out, and I don't have the answer to this yet, but this agreement between AES, the engineering firm, and the town, but this agreement between AES, the engineering firm, and the town, says that a lump sum of ninety thousand dollars will be paid. So we were awarded for, uh, just a little over forty-six thousand. The total amount due is ninety thousand. And I believe the extra is to update the zoning. And I did talk to the superintendent just briefly about the differences. I don't know when they last updated their zoning, but we did it in a twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. So ours is fairly well updated. I'm sure there are going to be some things that we do need to change. But I did want you to be aware of the discrepancy in the amount that we received at this point and the amount, the total amount that will be due. I don't know, I, I don't know exactly where the money will be coming from, and I don't know what portion ours will be. So just so you're informed. Questions? So it's exciting we got the grant, yeah, yeah. I think, does anyone have anything else? Any old business?
Well, not old business, but, um, it's, it's been brought to my attention, um, Walnut Street, the lighting is out again. So the street is very, very dark.
So that's a in- interesting historical question. Because those lights don't seem to really belong to anyone. Uh, some of them were turned over to us. Some of them have not worked for years. Some of them, no one knows where the power's even coming from. I don't know, Mary, do you, can you remember this better than me? I, I read through documents over forty years about this.
Yeah, it had, it was, I don't know, it was supposedly gi- given to the village from Sheridan or Sayonara or wherever it was. And it was kind of not really written into any minutes or notes. It was kind of said, oh, yeah, we did that.
But then someone withdrew the motion to accept them.
I don't remember that. I, I do remember Nisic was brought in at some point to discuss what could be done. I think my doctor said that uh, what you, um, a lot of them don't even have electric service too.
Yes.
They would need to be dug up and electric.
Services up under.
Be added to it. So it's, yeah, there's a lot of unanswered questions, so.
And I know, I, I know we couldn't include a lot of them in the LED swap out because they had no service. They didn't even go on. There was no electricity there. It, it, it's a puzzle. And I agree, it nee- it needs better lighting.
Yeah, it's a very dark street.
I don't know, um, I guess, I know we did talk to Nisic about it. I'll have to look up my notes on it again, Kim. It was really confusing.
That's the problem, it goes back that far.
Yeah.
That things get.
It was probably at least thirty years.
And that had something to do with the wiring.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause of lights.
It's like they turned over, they, they were private lights for Sheridan or Harris. And then they wanted to turn them over to the village, who was going to take them, and then they weren't sure if they should take them because half of them didn't work. And then it was all kind of in limbo.
Okay, so I still think we need to get Nisic to look at them again.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I wouldn't wanna be living up there in, you know, with the, with it that dark.
Yeah.
So anyway, that was brought to my attention. The other, the other item that was brought to my attention was Willow Street. That is a horrible, horrible street. It is so narrow and it's so that hairpin turn. You can't meet anybody. I feel bad for the Morellis that live on their cor- on that corner.
Yeah.
A suggestion was made to me, and I don't think that it's a bad idea, is to turn that street into a one-way street, south to north. So coming, as you come into French Village, you turn right, that would be your one-way, and you would exit on the top portion of the street. You can't meet two vehicles on that corner.
No, you can't.
And, you know, some people just wanna play, play chicken.
Yeah.
But you can't, anything of any size on that street is horrible. I don't, I, kudos to the guys for snow blow, snow plowing up there because but that would maybe eliminate some of the issues on that street if it were. I don't know what it would take to do that. I don't imagine it could be.
It's a village street. I think we have the right to do what we want with it.
I don't think it would have, it would be a bad idea. I think it would eliminate some traffic issues on that street.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting idea.
So, anyway, those were the
Yeah.
two things that
Yeah, no, that's, uh.
brought to my attention.
We should talk to some of the people up there and see how they feel about it.
It's not a big street, and there's, you know, not a ton of residents up there, so it's not like it's house, 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 and you have people being confused on it.
It is very narrow and no room for expansion.
No.
You can't, nothing you can really do about it.
No, you can't, because, you know, I think, I think of some of those houses, I mean, if you, if you were to take any kind of right-of-way, you're gonna be on the doorstep.
Is it porch?
Yeah, we are, or in the porch, yeah.
In their porch, yes.
Yeah, some of those houses, you know, have been there forever and they're built close to the road.
Let's look into that. Let's look into that. And I, and I will, I'll try to figure out the process to talk to Nisic about Walnut Street too.
Okay.
Um, yeah, those are both, those are, yeah, both were the ideas of pursuing, yeah. Thank you. Anyone have anything else? Motion to return. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Somebody wanna order this, Janice?
The ordering? Um, Juanita usually does the ordering.
I can check and note it.
Yeah, cause they would need to, they would need the tax exempt information.
I'll check it.
You'll probably need to look for a phone number. Do you want this for the coupon code?
Sure.